Good morning, I am Councilman Robert Stokes, Chairman of Education Workforce and Youth Committee. I'm going to introduce members of the committee. We have Councilman Torrance from the 7th District. We have Council Vice President Sharon Middleton from the 6th District. Councilman Bullock from the 9th District. Councilwoman Porter, who's a member of the committee, is, she'll be in late. And we also have Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District, who actually, this is her legislation on renaming Reach Partnership in Schofield to Senator Robert Dalton Stadium. Before we start, could you introduce yourself? She'll be letting those Spanish-speaking persons know exactly what their process is.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Yaslyn Machuca. I'm Chief of Staff of Councilwoman Odette Ramos. Just wanted to let everyone know if you're online and you need interpretation, there are instructions in the chat on how to sign up or not sign up, on how to listen into the interpretation. Si hay alguien en línea que está participando y escuchando virtualmente a la audiencia, hay instrucciones en el chat donde puede ver cómo participar y escuchar la audiencia en español. Gracias, thank you.
Thank you. Before we start, I would just, we also have Dominic McAlley from, where you go? From, okay, from the mayor's office. We have Trey Hayes, who is the committee's staff person. Okay, so we're going to pass it over to the sponsor of this particular resolution, Councilwoman Odette Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we start with the property renaming, just want to let everybody know that simultaneous translation is happening at the moment because we do have another conversation that I think most of you are here for regarding language access and hiring Latino workers. So, we're going to do that separately, but I just wanted to let you know we're making history again today. So, this bill, this is 230375, City Property Renaming Reach School Stadium to Senator Robert L. Dalton Stadium at Lake Clifton. And the stadium is not built yet, but it will be. And this is a big deal for the Reach School. Remember that Lake Clifton School closed and those students were moved to the Reach, what is now the Reach School, brand-new renovated school, but did not have a stadium. And they have been working hard to get that. MOU was signed by Wreckin Parks and by the school system. And there is money available now to build that stadium. And we had a meeting with all parties at the beginning of the year and it was discovered that we have the money for the stadium, but we don't have the money for the lights or the bathrooms. How do you have a stadium with lights and bathrooms? So, I immediately called Senator McCray. Senator McCray, as usual, comes through and he was able to get the rest of the funding for the project on the condition that we rename the stadium, which is not built yet, but will be soon, after Senator Robert L. Dalton. Senator Robert L. Dalton was the very first Senator, black Senator, from East Baltimore. And I've attached to my testimony op-ed that the Senator McCray put together about Senator Dalton. But the Senator, in addition to being a resident of Coldstream-Homeshead-Monobello up until his death last November, Senator Dalton also was the founder of Coldstream-Homeshead-Monobello Neighborhood Association. He was active in the Democratic Central Committee. He was a steel worker at Bethlehem Steel. He was a union leader. And he was, he and his family were very active in the community. It is fitting that we give Senator Dalton this honor to be on the stadium so that residents of the community and the students get to know who he was and how important he is and was to Baltimore. So, with that, there's also an amendment to add Lake Clifton on the name because it is very important for the students and for the alumni that this is, the sports teams at Reach are also called Lake Clifton. And so, we wanted to keep that name as well. So, with that, Mr. Chair, I ask for our committee's support for the amendment and for the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to recognize Tiffany Macklin from President Mosby's office also. I wanted to do some agency reports. Officer Equity and Civil Rights, is somebody here from there? Favor report.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Dominic McAlley, the mayor's office of government relations. They stand by their report.
Thank you.
Yep.
Law Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michelle Toth, on behalf of the Law Department, we approve for form and legal sufficiency.
Baltimore Development Corporation. Anybody here? Hit the button. Yeah, the right button. Thank you. Department of Transportation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and the committee. James Turner, Department of Transportation. Stand by our bill report in support of this legislation.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Dominic McAlley, Government Relations again. They also stand by their report, Department of Finance.
And Department of Real Estate.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Christine Griffin, on behalf of Department of Real Estate, and we stand by our report in support of this bill.
Okay, we are now going to turn this over to committee members who have questions about the renaming of the Lake Clifton School. Any, Council Vice President? Any questions?
No questions, but I'd like to move the amendment.
Okay, the amendment is to add Lake Clifton to the, the end of the name. And this amendment is on page 1 and line 3 after stadium. Insert at Lake Clifton on the same page in line 5 and 13. Each enters after stadium, insert Lake Clifton. So, we're going to vote on this amendment. Council Vice President said?
Yes.
Yes, and with second by Councilman Torrance. Councilman Stokes is a yes. Council Vice President?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Torrance?
Aye.
The amendment passed. Thank you. Now, we're going to go over to questions from our council members about this particular renaming of the school after Senator Dalton. Council Vice President, you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilman Bullock? Councilman Torrance? The sponsor of the bill?
I just wanted to add one thing, that normally renaming of school facilities has to go through the Board of School Commissioners. That is not the case in this situation because it is on Wreckin Parks' property and is a partnership between Wreckin Parks and the school system. So, we skipped that entire part.
Okay, I forgot, I've got to make a motion to approve the bill as amended, but I also want to vote on the particular, this actual naming of the school after Senator Dalton. Yeah, so I'm going to move the bill, right, right. As favorable.
Mr. Chair, do we have any testimony? Public or online? You might want to clarify.
I'm sorry, yeah. All right, John Doe? Are they here? Okay, Jeff, is that Burns? Come up and testify. This is, no.
He's on, Ms. Bell.
Okay, a little confusing. Carol Guy? Can you push the button to the right, identify yourself?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, council members and all assembled. It's with pleasure that I speak about the naming of the new stadium, the Robert Dalton, Robert L. Dalton Stadium at Lake Clifton. It seems so apropos that the first African-American state senator be honored in this way. He was from that community. He served that community in many ways. And there's been a connection between Lake Clifton and Reach going back to the days when it was Clifton Park Junior High. I'm a retired teacher. I worked at Lake Clifton between the mid-'70s and the mid-'80s, which would have been just a little bit, maybe at the end of Senator Dalton's tenure in the General Assembly. But at that time, Lake Clifton was a young school. Clifton Park was a very old school. And one of the things that we did at the lake was to establish an honor society and a student government. And our honor society spent time tutoring the students at Clifton Park Junior High. Also, I read online that Senator Dalton had been associated with Clifton Park Junior High on their council. So, it just seems so apropos to bring all of this together. And it's with pleasure that I speak in favor of the naming of the, to be, new stadium, the Robert L. Dalton Stadium at Lake Clifton. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily, I can't see the last name.
I think that's me and it was for the wrong bell. Apologies.
Oh, you signed to speak.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Tracy Garrett Rogers. I'm a member of the Lake Clifton Alumni Association and we support the building of the much-needed stadium complex for Reach Partnership, Lake Clifton, and we support the naming of the stadium in honor of Senator Robert L. Dalton. The stadium will be a state-of-the-art facility that will serve the school, Clifton Park, and the surrounding communities. And we appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess that's public testimony. We do have some call-ins, so could you use the raise-hand feature? Mr. McCoy, could you use the caller and raise-hand feature, please?
I thought I did.
Thank you. You go ahead and speak.
Good morning, everyone, members of the council. My name is Richard McCoy. I'm president of Lake Clifton High School Alumni Association. I've held that position for the past 20 years. We, as an organization, are, have been advocating and support the building of the new stadium that's going to replace the old outdated stadium, which now Morgan owns as property. But more importantly, we do support fully naming the stadium in honor of Senator Dalton, who represented the Chum community, and having Lake Clifton in that name of that facility. And like Ms. Rogers said, it's going to really benefit Clifton Park, our current school, which is Reach Partnership, that's there, and the surrounding communities. Thank you, everyone, for your time today and your support.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Are there any more call-ins? Mr. Hayes? Oh, that concludes the call-ins. So, we're going to go on and vote on this particular resolution. Is there a motion to move the bill as amended?
So moved.
Moved by Council Vice President, seconded by Councilman Torrance. Stokes is a yes. Councilwoman Vice President?
My vote is a yes and it's just so wonderful to see inclusivity and equity in action. And, you know, this is just a testament of how we're continuing to move forward with things that should have happened a long time ago. So, thank you for that.
Councilman Bullock? Councilman Bullock is a yes. This bill moves to the next, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman, I thought I got, Councilman Torrance? This bill moves to the next council meeting on October 16, 2023. We're going to take a brief recess before we move on to council oversight, LO 220137, informal hearing, hiring initiative, Spanish speakers. Thank you. Okay, we can, we want to start the... This is Resolution 22-0137R for the purpose of inviting representatives from the mayor's office of employment, the mayor's office of immigrant affairs, the Department of Human Resources, Department of Public Works, Department of Housing and Community Development, Department of Transportation, Department of General Services, the Office of Equity and Civil Rights, and the Baltimore City Public School System to discuss the hiring of Spanish speakers for employment in city government. We'll get ready to go to our agency reports. Law Department.
Thank you, Chair. Jeff Hocke-Settler with the Law Department. And we approve the form of this resolution for legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Stephanie Murdock, Director of Legislative Services for DHCD. We're pleased to participate in this informational hearing to discuss the hiring of Spanish speakers for employment in Baltimore City Government. I just wanted to highlight a few things that DHCD is presently doing. We have assessed all internal and external forms, our website content, handbooks, policies, and other content accessible to employees, recruits, constituents, visitors, and others to ensure not only ADA compliance of our forms, but to make sure they're accessible to individuals with limited English proficiency. We also utilize the Neighborly Platform, which is an online application portal to promote several of our programs that are important to the agency in multiple languages, including our Community Catalyst Grants, our home ownership incentives, our housing preservation programs, our housing upgrades to benefit seniors, tax sale exemption program, emergency mortgage and housing assistance programs, and new construction preservation of existing rental housing. And then finally, I wanted to highlight a language survey that we conducted this past summer. DHCD has 24 employees that have self-identified as speaking or signing in a language in addition to English, and that covers 21 different languages. We are supportive of finding ways to recruit Hispanic and Latino populations in the workplace, break down language barriers, and build trust in this ever-growing community. We defer to the Department of Human Resources in providing further detail on best practices to attract and retrain these candidates. We stand by our report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Department of Public Works.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Members of the committee, Marsha Collins, representing the Department of Public Works. At our first hearing on this particular bill, we talked a little bit about some of the things that we were doing in the process of looking at speakers of other languages, including Spanish. We mentioned that our new Be More Wise program in which we are training youth and people underserved with training in the water and wastewater fields. And we had support established in that program for those applicants who have English as a second language. We wanted to be sure that language would not be a barrier to those applicants and we have continued to hold that through. We're now getting ready for our third cohort of potential employees. We also mentioned that we would be hiring a Spanish-speaking liaison and I'm happy to report that we were successful in doing so. And she will be assigned to the District 1 and all Hispanic-Latino populated communities within other districts. So, we're very excited to have her onboard. I do know that we have members in both our administration and solid waste facility that I know speak Spanish as well. And we have looked at doing a poll about, we have a lot of people in our organization who speak a lot of languages and we expect to see many that do speak Spanish as well. One of the challenges, excuse me, that we discussed at that first hearing is how we make our information and meetings accessible to all. And we were at the point of just starting our outreach for the 10-year solid waste management plan. And the solid waste team took that guidance to heart. We made sure that our materials were translated into the five standard languages, which includes Spanish. We made sure at our public meetings, both virtual and hybrid, that there was an opportunity to hear translations. We provided, when we were made available, at, both in Spanish and French, when the in-person meetings occurred as well. We tried to share all of our information, both with the usual processes, excuse me, but also working with faith-based partners and community associations directly. We made sure that all of the drafts of the plan was translated into Spanish and online. The materials also applied, accommodated requests for translations in other language. You could simply click on a flag and get a translation. We provided closed captioning at those meetings. We had alternative slide decks for attendees with low vision and sent out information in advance of the meetings that were in-person about physical accessibility and public transportation before events. I will say that when you're out in the community, we're very fortunate in these chambers to have the ability to easily do hybrid applications. That's not true at all. So, while we did provide hybrid at the two in-person meetings, we had a little technical difficulty starting off, so sometimes we were a little bit late. But I believe that, I was just very proud of the solid waste team taking this to heart and finding many ways in which to be as open as possible to as many people as possible. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Department of Transportation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and the committee. James Turner, the Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report. Also, we do have, we do have Spanish speakers within my office, the policy office, and within our communications team to make sure that we're getting the information out, including hiring information in Spanish. Additionally, our HR department, who I've talked to, is very open to collaborating with different agencies here and with the council office, if you like, to make sure that we are hiring Spanish speakers and we're able to get the information out. Other than that, happy to engage in this conversation. And if you guys have any questions, happy to answer.
Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Catalina Rodriguez Lima, Director of MIMA. We stand by our report in support of this bill and are grateful to Councilwoman Ramos for elevating this topic that is very important to our office. 100% of my staff are bilingual. 50% of them are Spanish speakers that can read, write, and speak Spanish. Also, in our work around language access, we work with many of the agencies here to overcome barriers related to language, not just in Spanish, but other immigrants who can't speak English. We provide telephonic interpretation, translation of documents, training of employees, technical assistance, and also serve as a conduit for many of the information coming from city agencies to communities across the city. This work is possible thanks to our efforts in building relationships with ethnic media, community groups, and the wealth of communication platforms that we have developed over the years. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Office of Equity and Civil Rights.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Dominic McAlley, Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The Office of Equity and Civil Rights stands by their report.
Thank you. Mayor's Office of Employment and Development.
Dominic McAlley, again. Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The Office of Employment Development also stands by their report.
Thank you. Department of Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quentin Herbert, Director of Human Resources, Chief Human Capital Officer, with me this morning. I have Larissa Parrish, who is the manager of our Office of Policy and Compliance, and Adenike Clark, who is a policy analyst. We stand behind our bill report since the last, since the first hearing on this bill. We have a bilingual analyst on our Office of Recruitment's team. We also have a Spanish-speaking employee in our Office of Learning and Development, which provides professional development and training for our employees. Additionally, since the first hearing on this bill, this resolution, I'm happy to report that we have a video on the city's recruitment page that demonstrates in Spanish how to apply for current city positions. Also, the job aids for how to complete the applications online and workday are in both English and in Spanish. That's some achievements that we've, some progress that we've made since the last hearing. We are also working with agencies who have requested additional compensation for bilingual or Spanish-speaking employees to aid in their individual recruitment efforts as well. Thank you, and thank you, Councilwoman Ramos, for, again, elevating this very important issue.
Thank you. Department of Recreation and Parks.
Dominic McAlley, Mayor's Office of Government Relations. Wreckin Parks stands by their report as well.
Thank you. Department of General Services. Dominic, you everything today, huh?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Dominic McAlley, Mayor's Office of Government Relations. General Services also stands by their report.
Thank you. Baltimore City School System.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the city council. Emily Nielsen, Chief Human Capital Officer with City Schools. We stand by our report from this winter. Since the first hearing on this bill, I'm excited to share some additional steps that City Schools has taken to be able to attract and hire more Spanish speakers. We launched a referral campaign and also a connection campaign to help schools connect interested community members in working with City Schools with our human capital team. The form to collect that interest as well is in English and Spanish as well as we're prepared to have conversations to help staff who, or, no, excuse me, staff, potential staff who speak Spanish to navigate our system through bilingual staff members who will be having those recruiting calls when we get information. We've also taken steps to expand our international recruitment. This year, we hired almost 100 international teachers for our city school. We're planning to double that for next year and explicitly recruiting in Spanish-speaking countries. We've established a partnership with a teacher prep organization in Colombia and are looking to add partnerships in Mexico and Argentina as well in the coming year to increase our international teachers who speak Spanish coming in to join our city school staff. We are continuing to leverage the social media and the recruitment platforms that we use for staff in both English and Spanish, and are partnering with our ESOL team to implement our multi-learner and community strategic plan. So we stand ready to continue partnering to bring in more Spanish speakers to our staff at city schools to help our growing community of students and families who speak a language other than English. We stand ready to partner. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we start, four ladies here, could you identify? I know some of y'all from the Mayor's Office of Family and Children's Services. Could you press the mic and let us know who you are and where you?
Hi, good morning. My name is Adenike. I am with DHR's Office of Policy and Compliance.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Larissa Parrish. I'm with the Department of Human Resources.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Angela Whitaker, and I'm the Director for Baltimore City Community Action Partnership under the Office of Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success.
Thank you.
And good morning. I'm Dr. Brooks, Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success.
Thank you. I believe Director Riddick, you have a presentation?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just real quick, I wanted to explain that, you know, we have asked three additional agencies to come before us today that weren't on the original resolution because of some of the challenges that we had heard in the last hearing about some residents not being able to get proper services from DSS, the CAP centers. I had been talking to 911 for the last four years, I think, for the last three years, about making sure that people can get access to 911. So they will do a presentation about what their technology is that they're working on, and then also will hear from 311. So the next four were not on the resolution, but we wanted them to come today to make specific remarks. So, Director, could you, could you introduce? Yeah, okay.
Director Riddick, can you, if you're doing a presentation, can you come up here and identify yourself for us?
So I'm not actually presenting. I have the company that I work with, that's been working with for the last year, and 911 that will actually do a presentation. So do you still want me standing up there or? Okay, you want me standing up there and introduce? Okay.
So is he?
Good morning, members of the chair. My name is Tanya Riddick. I'm the 911 Director for the City of Baltimore. As Councilwoman Ramos has been explaining, for the last four years, we've been in discussion about the language, the language services that we offer the citizens in Baltimore when they dial 911. And the last, like, one of the last hearings, we discussed one of the services that I actually started utilizing in 2022, which is a service called Convey 911. And what they offer is language translation through text messages as of right now. So what happens is the caller will call into 911 and they can, we can type in English and it will translate to them in their native language, whatever their phone is registered in, and even whatever the phone is set in, it will translate to them in their native language. And this is for Spanish or any non-English speaking callers. And then they will respond back to us and they can type back to us in their native language, but it will respond back to the 911 specialist in English. So this also is a big help when it comes down to 911 because it breaks that language barrier that we've been facing for many years within the city. So I have Convey here, I have Jeff Burns here from Convey, and he will do just like a short presentation to let you know what services he's offering. And it's not only for public safety, however, it's also for any agencies within the city of Baltimore or in Maryland, wherever he would like, you know, wherever somebody would like to do the language translation services at. So I will turn it over to Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, it looks like the slides didn't get to Mr. Hayes, so just give me one second to do the, get the slides going for, for our presenter. My apologies.
Mr. Burns? When speaking, could you make sure you identify yourself first?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and council members. My name is Jeff Burns. I'm with a Baltimore-based company called Convey 911. And our mission is to address the language access gap that exists in public safety as well as public sector. We're born and raised in Baltimore. I have an extensive background in public safety. I was in the fire department in Howard County and Prince George's County, Maryland, for about 18 years and witnessed firsthand some of the language barriers that exist when community members have a need to call 911.
Mr. Burns, before you, Christine, if I want to recognize Derek Adams from President Moe's office and Councilwoman Porter, who is a member of the committee.
We've partnered with Baltimore City 911 in an effort to bring language access into the 911 agency here in Baltimore. And they've been pretty instrumental in helping us understand the day-to-day challenges that they have as they deal with language access when someone calls 911 and they don't speak English. Our service offers a combination of technology and human interpreters. But we're looking at this as a larger problem that can be addressed across all public sector agencies, whether it's DPW, Department of Health, Department of Transportation. You have constituents that don't speak English as their primary language. So I am here along with Wayne Harris. Let him introduce himself and kind of talk about what we're doing.
Good morning, everyone. Members of city council, my name is Wayne Harris. I'm the operations manager of Baltimore City 911. As Jeff stated, we've partnered with Convey to bridge the gap between language barriers. One of the biggest things that we have in 911 is the technology. With that particular technology, what we use, partnered with Convey, we're able to text in 170-plus languages. Being able to text in 170-plus languages ensures that anyone having to contact 911, we can communicate with at any time for that particular emergency. Other parts of that is being able to also locate them with those, with those same services. Those are the two biggest things. And with the future, I think with the future, the technology, AI technology?
Technology roadmap.
Yeah, the technology roadmap, the way it's going, the same way we're having this conversation today and in the very near future, we'll be able to have that same conversation with someone that speaks a different language, the same way we're speaking now without text. We'll be able to hear each other the same way, from native language to native language, from English to Spanish, or Spanish to French, or whatever that language may or may not be.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Lastly, you know, I'm born and raised here in Baltimore. My three daughters attend Baltimore County Public Schools. The elementary school that they attend is Halethorpe Elementary, and the predominant demographic of students is Burmese. The parents don't speak English. Most of the children do. But those same parents have needs of other city and county agencies. So ensuring that we have language access covered across all of those, those public-facing agencies is our, is our mission, and we're very proud that it started here in Baltimore. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Before we start, I want to turn the comments over to Councilwoman Oded, who's responsible this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, who had the slides? Who sent them to me?
I believe Yaslin did. But if, if it's not coming up, it's, it's fine. We can distribute them afterwards.
Okay, yeah, that's what we'll, that's what we'll do. Because I can't seem to, here it is. There they are. I got it. Oh, it's a one-pager. It's all good. No, that's fine. So I just, Mr. Chair, thank you for allowing us to do this. I apologize for the technical issues. So it's exciting to me that the, that nine, we're going in this direction for 911. Obviously, it's not a substitute for hiring, but at least it helps us with the, you know, short-term piece. So do you know what the timing is when you'll be able to do the person-to-person? Because right now, it's, you know, text and it's, you know, person to computer.
Sure. We believe that technology can address a lot of the language access issues, but not all of them, which is why we've ensured that we have a human network of interpreters that support 350 languages. There's 22,000 of them and they're available on demand. So today, we're doing language translation across text messaging. We're working with Maryland Information Network and 211. We're working with 988 in Maryland and other agencies. We have conversations ongoing with a few other city agencies to ensure that they have the same tools. Our technology roadmap that we're going to start delivering into the Baltimore 911 Center later this year will provide a voice-to-voice interaction. We all know what Amazon Alexa is. That's the AI that drives, you know, a lot of the, the kind of new technology. So envision a workflow by which, whether it's 911 or any city agency, you are on the phone, you're speaking English, you have a non-English individual on the other end and they're hearing an Amazon Alexa-type voice, except they're speaking in their language. So our goal is to ensure real-time seamless communication using voice and leveraging both the AI as well as human interpreters to ensure that, that, that conversation and communication is seamless.
And you envision this being able to be used in other agencies? And we can also try to help with growing it to ensure that there's public, access for public meetings as well?
Absolutely. We have the City of Laurel and their city hall. We have several municipal agencies outside of Maryland. In fact, our service married two non-English speaking individuals in city hall in Portland, Maine, last week. So we're looking at this as a, as, as a public sector solution, not specific to 911 or public safety, but ultimately being able to deliver this same kind of technology to just enable people to speak to each other, whether it's over the phone or over video. And this is a really good example. We're seeing transcriptions that are translated. That's very much what our service is doing. And we're supporting that with human interpreters that are certified and trained to interpret across about 350 languages, including about four different dialects of sign language.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Council Vice President had a question, real quick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, it's not for you. This is for Public Works, just, I guess, a footnote for the Economic and Community Development Committee, which most of us are on that committee as well. And as you're preparing for the bill for the 10-year solid waste plan, and if you remember our conversation about the data and as far as outreach and in-person and online outreach, if you could include data for outreach for Latino-Hispanic community and just a little note about the 10-year solid waste plan is something that comes through the council. And we're on a stringent timeline because it has to be submitted to the state in a timely manner for funding and everything else. So just as a preparation, since this is a very important topic for Public Works, to try to make sure some of that information is captioned, in a caption, so we're not delaying that 10-year plan. I don't know if you want to comment on any of that, Marsha?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Yes, we will make sure that as part of our presentation for that program and report to delineate all of the efforts that we have done. I think they have been one of our more successful efforts to reach people who we may not have been reaching before. So I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. We usually go in the same order where the committee members always ask questions. We might change it around on what those persons who came. Okay, we just had to change something. So 911 have a presentation, Fire Department. Anyone here from the Fire Department?
They just did it.
Okay. 311?
Good morning, council and everyone. My name is Lisa Allen.
Okay, you're on, sorry.
Good. My name is Lisa Allen. I'm the Call Center Director for 311 under Baltimore City Information and Technology. Since our last hearing, we've remained very diligent in trying to recruit and obtain multi-language agents. However, being open 16 hours a day, 365 days a year, it's been a challenge to cover that time. Therefore, we have continued to piggyback off of the state's contract and use a language line to make sure that everyone has access to 311 during all of the times of the day. So similar to what the gentleman just explained, if a, a person calls and 311 and needs, does not speak English, we can hook with the language line and literally voice-to-voice translate between the agent and between the caller. So we have like a middle person doing that. Also, though, we are leveraging technology and we will be translating our mobile app by the end of the year into Spanish so that our Spanish population can better use the mobile app and they will be translated and be able to put in service requests. Another thing we're leveraging with technology is we're developing a chatbot. The chatbot will actually be available right away in 71 languages. And so we will be able to chat and text with our folks that do not speak English. So we remain committed to try to make sure that we have the tools that we need to make sure everyone has access to 311. And we'll continue to try to recruit as many agents as we can to cover the span that we have. Do you have any questions?
Did I hear you say that at the end of the year, we will have Spanish-language 311 app?
Yes, we have an app now and we are in the process of translating it. It's a technology issue, but, but something that's achievable. And we've been working on it for quite a while. So we plan to implement that by the end of the year. So it's our same app, but you'll be able to translate in Spanish.
I'm very happy for these news. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we usually have the committee members speak, but I wanted to.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I have.
Mayor's Office of Children and Family Services, your presentation, please.
Good morning, again, committee chair and committee members. Deborah Brooks, the Mayor's Executive Director, the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. We stand by our report, but I do have some additions. We currently have three staff members who, who do speak Spanish, that are staff members at our CAP centers, one being the manager of the Southeast CAP Center. All of our staff do have access to our language line and they have been trained. And we will continue to provide ongoing training so that all constituents that come in that are bilingual will be able to be serviced. Since the submission of this report, we also have offered an additional candidate, the opportunity to join our agency, to be a member of the staff at the Southern CAP Center, which is housed in Cherry Hill, which then will increase our number of staff that are bilingual, that speak Spanish. We also have added to our e-recruit where we're encouraging Spanish speakers to apply for positions within our agency. to apply for positions within our agency to include the CAP Centers. We also work very diligently with MIMA to identify and translate all vital documents, to include documents such as our back to school flyer that we, when we participated in our back to school rally and event, also any materials and palm cards that we have for our CAP Centers so that we can make sure that all constituents have access to services and resources that are provided through our CAP Centers. And we are available here today to receive any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Mr. Brockington online from the Baltimore Department of Social Service. Mr. Barrington.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you for this opportunity. Good morning, Councilwoman Ramos. Thank you as well for this opportunity. I'm excited to share, since our last hearing, we have had courageous conversations with MIMA. I personally have hand-delivered boxes of pamphlets and flyers for paraphernalia for our Spanish-speaking customers. Also, I have been in communication with Comité Latina, which we are engaging in scheduling a meeting for us to present our services to Spanish-speaking community. We have also scheduled visits with MIMA to tour two of our district offices that are heavily populated with Spanish-speaking customers. We have sat down and had a meeting with MIMA to brainstorm on ways to better be effective with our community. One thing that, another thing that PCPSS is also doing is having a tracking system, whereas though we have the ability to go in, see what time the customer met with our staff to make sure there's quality assurance and commitment to this endeavor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we usually, again, we usually have the committee members speak, so I'm gonna do it a little different. I'm gonna let those persons over here to testify, start off that way. So Lucia Islas, Lucia Islas. Lucia Islas, you can speak.
Can you hear me well?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Lucia Islas. I am the President of Comité Latino. Comité Latino is grateful for this bill and support opportunities to hire Latinos across city agencies. This effort though must also address language barriers of speakers of other languages. We support a comprehensive and strategic approach to language access. A language access plan will require significant financial investments and we look forward to continue to work with MIMA as they support city agencies in their efforts to provide professionals and culturally competent interpretation and translation services for speakers of other languages. This is what I think about all this. I think this is great. Also, I forgot to let you know, guys, that my name is Lucia Islas. I am the President of Comité Latino and I'm so thankful for Oded Ramos to do all this thing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Carlos Orbi. Juliana Valencia Banks.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Council Members. My name is Juliana Valencia Banks. I'm a proud resident of Medfield, a member of the Mayor's Hispanic Commission and a member of the Latino Racial Justice Circle. The LRJCU welcomes and supports initiatives that promote workforce development of Latinos across the city and language access for individuals with limited English proficiency. We support this bill wholeheartedly, but want to remind the Council that shared language does not always mean shared culture or shared lived experience. It is important to highlight this because the assumption can be that hiring Latino Spanish speakers will solve language barriers to individuals with limited English proficiency and this is just not the case. We support a comprehensive approach to language access as presented by the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs that also provides training for working with interpreters and provides cultural competency trainings. There are Latinos for whom Spanish is not their primary language and instead speak indigenous languages. And even when working with Spanish speakers, they still face language barriers. Promoting and hiring Latinos is crucial to the development and the growth of our city. However, it is equally as important to provide culturally competent language access across all city agencies and ensure that public servants are following guidelines and trainings provided by MIMA. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica Prutis.
Good morning, esteemed members of the Council. Buenos dias, miembros del comité estimados. My name is Erica Puentes Martinez and I'm CASA's Research and Policy Analyst for Baltimore City and Central Maryland. CASA is the largest immigrant and working-class rights organization in the mid-Atlantic region with a membership of over 149,000 Black, Latin, Afro-descendant, Indigenous immigrants and working-class families. Mi nombre es Erica Puentes Martinez. Soy la analista de política de CASA y me enfoco en la ciudad de Baltimore y Maryland central. CASA es la organización de abogacía más grande de la clase trabajadora y de la clase inmigrante en esta región. Tenemos una membresía de más de 149,000 Morenos, Latinos, Afrodescendientes, Inmigrantes Indígenas y personas de la clase trabajadora y migrantes aquí en esta región. Resolution 220137R is of great importance to CASA members in the city of Baltimore. Esta resolución es de gran importancia a los miembros aquí en Baltimore. Language accessibility for our community has consistently been a challenge. While the community has felt the need for Spanish-speaking city government staff for a long time, this issue became particularly accentuated during the height of the COVID pandemic when Spanish-speaking Baltimore residents felt the brunt of this health and social crisis because of the linguistic barriers that obstructed the already difficult-to-access emergency government services. Across the nation and at home, this pandemic revealed the government's lack of preparedness to support marginalized communities and highlighted how Spanish-speaking communities often get left behind. During this time, CASA was flooded with cases from members who were being taken advantage of by landlords who acted knowing, knowing that tenants did not have access to know your rights and information, resources, or government agencies that could protect them because of the systemic lack of Spanish language support. We know of multiple cases where landlords attempted to evict Spanish speakers in the time of a statewide eviction freeze. And for this reason, CASA worked closely with Baltimore City Housing Department and the first three Spanish-speaking staff on their team to work on hundreds of eviction prevention cases. If this city hadn't taken the move to hire Spanish-speaking staff, this would have meant that a sizable portion of our Baltimore community would have been left behind, vulnerable by the local government. We strongly believe that this housing department hiring move taken during the pandemic was a strong step toward carving out a more just Baltimore where all of our residents can benefit from equal access to resources and support. Thus, we want to stress the importance of hiring Spanish-speaking staff, not just in housing, but in other city departments offering human and health services. This is a way to ensure that we are mitigating structural inequalities and creating a more healthy Baltimore where all of our communities are given equal opportunity to thrive. Nosotros creemos fuertemente que la movida del Departamento de Casas que hicieron para obtener empleados que hablan español durante la pandemia fue un paso fuerte para crear un Baltimore más justo donde todos nuestros residentes pueden beneficiar de acceso igual a los recursos y el apoyo del gobierno. Entonces nosotros queremos estresar al comité que es sumamente importante tener empleados que hablan español, no solo en el Departamento de Hogares, pero también en otros departamentos de la ciudad que ofrecen servicios de salud y humanos. Esto es una forma para asegurarnos que estamos combatiendo las inigualidades estructurales y estamos creando a una ciudad, a un Baltimore más saludable donde todas nuestras comunidades pueden tener una oportunidad igual para prosperar. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Susan Barrios.
Oh, it's on. Okay, sorry. Good morning, everyone. My name is Susana Barrios. I am the Vice President of Latino Racial Justice Circle and I'm here in support of language access hiring and also promoting cultural competency training because you cannot hire everyone, right? And then, so people need to learn how to use the language line or any other supports that are available. You know, we have AI now that people can use. I have been, since 2021, I was a vaccine PR ambassador where I was providing interpretation for people and information about the vaccine. And I'm bilingual and I was able to help the people that spoke Spanish. But I also encountered a lot of people that didn't speak Spanish or English, spoke other languages, Lao. Afghan, they were from Afghanistan. And I was, I brought this to the attention of MIMA and they provided us with an app that we could use so that we could help those people. They could register to get their vaccine. They could get information. We could answer their questions. So I think that was a big lesson that even though MIMA provided that training, there were a lot of people that still refused to use that app because it was too time-consuming. So I think we need to remind people that this is not just, this is what the law says according to Title VI of the 1964 Civil Rights Act, that you have to provide language access. And every staff member across, across all agencies needs to be aware that they have to provide these services, not just, not just hiring somebody that's bilingual because you, you will only be able to help one person in one language. So I am in full support and I'm in support of MIMA and all the services because I'm, they really provide a lot of support to the agencies. Thank you.
Thank you. Angelo Solera.
Buenos dias. Good morning. First, I want to thank Councilwoman Oded Ramos for introducing this bill. This is a historic bill, the first time in the history of this body that we have this bill introduced. Thank you for having the courage and the willingness to have this conversation, a very serious conversation that affects many people in Baltimore City. My name is Angelo Solera. I'm the founder and the executive director of Nuestras Raíces, Inc. We are a Latino cultural organization. Our mission is to educate, promote, and preserve the richness and diversity of the Latino culture and artistic heritage throughout the Baltimore metabolism region. We just held our main event Fiesta Baltimore this past weekend where thousands of Latino residents attended the cultural event to celebrate our culture and our heritage. And also Americans, black, white, pink, and purple also came to this event. And I say that to show you that there is a whole lot of people like us. We, I'm listening to some of the remedies that some of the agencies are putting in place to address this issue and I'm sorry to tell you, most of you are missing the point. It's not just language access. It's about cultural barriers. It's about representation. The Latino community represents about 8% of the total population in Baltimore City. However, we are not represented in city government. Having technology and we know what happens with technology, it doesn't really work most of the time, like we see today. Technology cannot address cultural barriers. It's important that we have people that look like us, talk like us, have our experiences, providing services, not only to people who have language access problems, but people like me. I speak English properly. I've been in this country for 42 years. I vote, I pay taxes. I want to see people that represent me in city government. That's a right as citizens of Baltimore. There are thousands of US-born Latino children who go to school every day and they never see a Latino teacher. How is that possible? When we have no representation, we don't receive the same level of services, benefits, and opportunities. So it's a whole lot more than just language access. Language access is just a band-aid to make it look like we are doing something. We really need to move beyond that. If you go to McDonald's, if you go to Home Depot, if you go to Bank of America, if you go to Chick-fil-A, there are Latinos working there. They don't use sign languages, systems, they don't use these translation services. They have people working there because we are customers. And the businesses realize that to serve us, you have to have people who understand us. City government needs to understand that you need to have representation of the people you are providing the services to. So it's not just about language access. It's about representation. 60 years ago, City Hall didn't look like this. Let's wait, hopefully we don't have to wait 60 years to see our people represented, not only in City Hall, but in city government. And again, thank you, Oded Ramos, for, for doing this. We support you 100% in whatever we can do to support. We are here, but let's move beyond language access. Let's talk about representation of Latinos in city government because we pay taxes, because we vote, because we fix your roads, we fix your meals at your restaurants, we clean your houses, we cut your grass, we fix the houses that are deteriorating in Baltimore City. We do a whole lot in this city and we need to get the services that everybody else gets, not just be treated as second-class citizens. Because when you neglect, and what's happening here is we are being neglected by city government across the board. That's what happens. Let's learn from the mistakes that we makes in City, in City of Baltimore years passed. Many of the social issues that we encounter today in City of Baltimore are totally related to the fact that we ignore certain percentage of the population. And when we don't provide services, we are doing the same thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Romel Marmoegus. I probably chopped your name up there, so I apologize.
It's okay. I'm used to it. Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Councilwoman Oded Ramos, for introducing this historic bill. I have no doubt that it will pass.
Can you introduce yourself for us?
Is that good?
Your name?
Oh, my name is Romel Marmolejos. I am a longtime resident of Baltimore City in Baltimore County. Came here in 1997, 1996, actually. When I came here, Baltimore looked very different. You know, I worked for the City Health Department for a long time and one of our, the things that we took the initiative, know that it was in place actually, required for us, was to go out there and serve the community. to go out there and serve the community. I went countless times to the Department of Social Services at that time to interpret for people, for women that needed services. I went countless times on the very few community service, health services places that people went to seek health care, to translate, interpret for very sensitive topics that was very invasive for the patient, right? So we had a crossroad right here, because when I graduated from Patterson High School in 1998, I was one of less than five Latinos that graduated from high school that time. I was one of, at that time, less than 50 Latinos that were in the entire school. The last statistics that I heard from that particular high school is that close to 51% of the students today are Latinos. What does that mean? It means that while other ethnicities were exiting Baltimore City, our community was coming in. If you walked up and down Eastern Avenue, for the longest time, every business that opened up there would not stay in business open for more than three or four months. Go right now. Go not only, not only look at up and down Eastern Avenue, but go on the side streets. Those are vibrant Latino businesses that are contributing greatly to the community, I mean, to the economy of this city. Go to South Baltimore. Look at all of those abandoned houses that were there before, Brooklyn, Currys Bay, Cherry Hill, all up and down Annapolis Road. I had my own business in finance, trying to educate my people about how to leverage finance the right way. Before, I used to be an outreach worker. I used to go to those places. I used to go to houses and service other communities. But today, I go up and down there, I go to health fairs, I go to promote my business, and I see people that look like me. These empty houses are being occupied by new immigrants that come here looking for something. So we need to leave the emotions aside, and we need to look at this from a very realistic standpoint. Yes, I have no doubt that your bill is going to pass, but what is going to guarantee that these agencies are actually going to hire these Latinos that are being competent, that are going to be competent to go out there and do the work that needs to be done? Are there going to be good enough salaries to maintain these jobs? Are there going to be good enough salaries for these positions to actually fill these positions? Once in place, if you find these people, are there going to be actual Latinos that culturally can represent their community? Or are there going to be people that have some Hispanic last name, but can always really speak the language, doesn't really understand the culture? So let's leave emotion aside. There are people already in city government doing an excellent job. Guess what? It's not enough yet, but we have a great opportunity in our hands right now to make it good enough. Yes, language access is necessary, and I don't want to stand here too long. Understand this, yes, we have, I don't know how many different languages, people from different countries. That is important. That is, we're not downplaying that. That is important. But it's not enough for a community as large as Latinos. We need actual people in these places. And once they're in these places, they need to go out there to the community. There are many agencies, third-party agencies, nonprofits, doing an excellent job and promoting this. That's not enough. These people, once in place, need to go out there in the community themselves. They need to put a face with a name, so our community learn how to fish, learn how to fish. Let's stop feeding them just feeding them a fish. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our public testimony. We're going to go over to our virtual. Those in attendance virtually, please raise your hand so we can identify you if you'd like to speak. Is there anyone? There's no one virtually, so we're going to go with questions from the committee. I'm going to start off with Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions, but just a quick comment, if I may. And I guess this comment is based on me serving as vice president of the council and also as the present longest-serving elected official in Baltimore City Hall at this time. And I want to just go back to, I was fortunate enough to be one of the people that pushed the Dream Act. And of course, at that time, there were no Latino representation on this council, but I want to speak for just the body, this legislative body that I think, since my time in office, before Councilwoman Ramos joined us, we have continued to fight for just rights for everyone, including Hispanic-Latino population, and we're going to continue to keep that fight as a body. And I just think it was important for me to mention that as a, also as a female elected official. When I started on this council, there were, half of the council were females, and we are dwindling as females as well. So there are a lot of, I, long life, I born and raised in Baltimore, and I can go all the way back when Baltimore was literally Caucasian or Black and Black. So I was unfortunate enough to watch the growth of the Latino population, and we on this body of the council continue to support all neighborhoods and will definitely continue to work with you and Councilwoman Ramos to make sure your culture, which I am a person that says "our" culture, because I also happen to be a person that I call myself a Black African-American female, but I am completely multicultural. And America is my place, my birthplace. I have no other place but Baltimore, really. So I'm one of those people that still in search of my roots, but I had to, my family had to make a stance to be representative of a body of people, and I'm very proud of that and those accomplishments. So I just felt I had to, you know, I listen to everything that you say. I represent an area that Central Park Heights is definitely growing for, with homeownership in Latino community, and I think all of our neighborhoods are, it's happening, and we can see it. So we are a welcoming city, continually working together. You have representation that has all, she, I can't think of your name right now. But you have been representing the community for a very long time and a very hard worker, and I appreciate that as well. So again, Councilwoman Ramos, thank you for bringing, continuing to bring issues like this to the forefront as we continue to, to fight for all of our neighborhoods in Baltimore. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Oded Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have some questions for the agencies as we continue this conversation, and I really appreciate my colleagues engaging in this, in this conversation, because our community is growing. The Department of Finance is not here, but I wonder, from the mayor's office, one of the questions that I had was, one of the things that we've been hearing from all of the agencies is that progress from our last hearing, our hearing was in February, and one of the things that I had asked at the time was the number of people that are working in finance that are Latino Spanish speakers, particularly in the frontline offices relative to the cashier's office, the, you know, everybody, you know, paying bills, et cetera. At the time, there was none. So I'm expecting that there should be some by now. So if you could get that information from me, that would be helpful.
Yes, Councilwoman, we'll definitely get you that information. And if you have any other questions, I'll be here to answer them. Well, not answer them, but you know, get the information that we can give for you.
Sure. Yes, thank you so much.
No problem.
The other question I had was for DPW. I'm very pleased that you're, you heard us loud and clear in the last hearing and other conversations that we've had. The liaison, when did that person start?
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. She starts on the 16th of this month.
Wonderful, okay. And I know that, you know, DPW is still needing to hire pretty much so many positions to, not just in administration, but also just really everywhere. And so could you talk a little bit more about some of the recruiting efforts that you're working on with DHR? Because one of the things that we're, you know, we've got capacity, you know, obviously in DPW, so, and this is a workforce that I think is ready, so I wonder if, what those recruitment efforts are looking like.
Thank you, and certainly Mr. Herbert can respond for DHR, but we have done a number of recruitment and hiring efforts in concert with DHR, helping us with reaching out to people who do not speak English, or it's their second language. We continue to look internally to begin to see who we have already working with us, who could be a resource, and to address some of the cultural issues that are being raised here today, in addition to having people capable of speaking. We have looked at the possibility of getting someone in our customer-facing areas, so that we do not have to necessarily rely upon a translation service. And those are just the things that I'm personally aware of.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman. I would just like to add that we do partner with MoED as well to host quarterly recruitment efforts, and the communications for those quarterly events are produced in both English and Spanish. We also hosted this past May, Citywide Career Fair, which 16 agencies, DPW was one, all of our large operational agencies participated. Five of those agencies had interviews and hires on the spot. We did have a room set aside where the video that I mentioned earlier was available to candidates who needed to view the video or see the job aids in Spanish to be able to apply, and we did have that opportunity available to those citizens there on the spot. I also just wanted to kind of circle back and let you know that, according to census data, the Latino population is 5.6% of our city population. What we have as self-identifying as Latino today is 3%. So we do have work to do. I will say there is hesitancy on some of our employees to self-identify when we ask for a race. We have 12,785 employees as of today. Over 2,900 of those employees did not identify a race. So that 3% may in fact be greater. We just don't know what those 2,900 would have, would have put in that report. So we are making some progress. There is still a long way to go and a lot of work for us to do, but we are making progress.
Thank you. I'll pass it along to my other colleagues.
Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I did have a quick question just about timeline. So when we talk about the execution of these language services within each of the agencies, do we have a timeline? When will, when will these language services be fully implemented? I heard from 3-1-1 that it'll be by the end of the year. Do we have a, any type of timeline from any other agency?
Okay. Tenia Reddick, Number One Director. For our services that we're offering the citizens, it'll be implemented by the end of the year, whether it's the voice instead of the text message, it will be the voice. But we also still utilize the third-party language line that most city agencies use, but that's just the additional resource that I did include for, like I said, to break that language barrier. But ours should be implemented by the end of the year. We're working with the vendor.
And we don't have standalone services. We utilize the language line that other city agencies utilize as well, which we depend on, our partners were 3-1-1 and Mima.
The reason why I ask that question is, one, there seems to be, Director Herbert, you actually hinted on where I was getting at, there seems to be a reliance on the language lines from one agency. I believe that the sponsor is really looking for how we can integrate these language access services, these cultural competency services, within each of the agencies. So I'm wondering if there can be some sort of performance management metric for each of the agencies that we have that clearly documents and outlines the integration within specific agency operations and procedures. Thank you.
Councilman Bullock, I mean, Council, Bullock?
Yeah. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the sponsor, Councilmember Ramos. It's a great bill. Want to just go back to something that Director Herbert was mentioning, because I think it opens up a door to some of the complexities we deal with, right? So on one hand, we look at the percentage of the population, and then the percentage of the population that's represented in these roles and some of the language. I think it also speaks to sort of the complexities that we deal with when we start talking about things like race and class and ethnicity. And that goes for both Spanish speakers and non-Spanish speakers. You know, one of the things we can recognize is that, you know, there's a shared struggle and a shared challenge that we have historically in this country. We think about even those who are Spanish speakers who may present as African or European or native-looking, right? But again, the language is there, but also some of the challenges, right? So whether you're from El Salvador or Dominican Republic, right? Or, you know, if we're thinking about somebody from Panama or Mexico, right? There's a lot of cultural differences across there, but some similarities. But I do think it's worth having these conversations, and I appreciate the comments from our residents, our citizens, right, who are talking about what it means to be represented, right? It's great that we have someone on our council who can help guide some of these conversations and push legislation in this way. But some of the comments you made in terms of the follow-through and hiring, I think I felt, I felt it, and a lot of us felt it as well, because these are some of the same conversations we've had over years in terms of hiring, whether someone be African-American or what have you, where we're talking about, well, we've done our best efforts, but we couldn't find someone who fit the bill, right? And what it really means to be inclusive. So again, thank you for raising those points and being very transparent, because we can all understand exactly what you're going through. And there's a, like I said, there's history in this country, and again, I think we're at a point to really do something about it. So again, I thank you for everybody who came out today, the agencies who are doing this important work, who are trying to act, do their best, given the challenges, but also the voice and your lived experience of lifting that up. So again, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make a comment, Mr. Romel. I hear you. I hear you. You know, this is long overdue, but this should cover every ethnic organization in this city, in this state, in this country. And I know you, we are actually making history, but I think this body, this city council is part of history, because we support this ourselves. So I'm sure when we vote on this on October the 16th, the whole council is going to be part of making history in Baltimore. So, Mr. Romel, I hear you. It's long overdue, but again, there are, there are other ethnic groups that should be here also, and we should be talking about them also. So thank you for your testimony. Councilwoman Oded?
Yeah, I have a couple other questions for Director Whitaker and Dr. Brooks. At our last hearing, we heard from residents who spoke Spanish only, and we did have a translator available, really heartbreakingly letting us know that they felt like they weren't accepted into the CAP Center, or even one instance with DSS, because they didn't speak Span, or they didn't speak English. And so I'm hoping that, if you could repeat again how many you've hired, but also that there's that training going on in each of the CAP Centers, so that, you know, not just training on language line, but again, the trainings that Mima offers and regarding the fact that, you know, everybody is, comes to the CAP Center because they need help, and everybody deserves that. And so if you could talk a little bit more about some of the improvements that you've made since the last made since the last hearing, when you and I talked right afterwards, because I don't think you were at it, but we did talk afterwards about that, and hoping that that, the encounter that our constituent had is no longer happening.
So, yes, so thank you for that. First, I want to just offer that anyone that comes to the CAP Center is welcome. And so, we, both myself and Director Whitaker, as well as our manager of our CAP Centers, have made this very clear to all staff, that if there is anyone that comes into the CAP Center that does not speak English, that we provide that assistance. We, all of our staff have been trained, if there is not a Spanish speaker that is at that CAP Center, or not just a Spanish speaker, but not anyone that speaks that language of the person that comes in, that we, that they do have access to the language line, but also that we are being intentional about making sure that we are providing them the best service that we can. As I did speak, we do currently have three staff members that do speak Spanish at our Southeast Community Action Partnership, including the manager of that center. And so, if there is a Spanish speaker that comes into another one of our CAP Centers and the, the CAP Center staff accesses the language line but still feels that that's not enough, they do reach out to someone at the Southeast CAP Center to be able to assist that constituent that came into the other CAP Center. We also, as I did mention, have now offered employment to another candidate so that we can continue to staff all of our centers with bilingual staff members across the board. Again, as we've heard today, and as we believe, that it is more important to actually have a person to be able to support the constituents, someone that has lived experiences that can relate with those persons that are coming in to support, as well as, we do have the manager that speaks Spanish, and if she can just come up to the front to just talk a little bit about how we are supporting all of our constituents, please.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Daniella McDonald, and I'm the Human Services Manager for the Baltimore City Community Action Partnership. I am really pleased to say that in my time at CAP, we have made tremendous strides in the right direction. All of our material is in English and Spanish. All of our staff is trained with telephonic interpretation. I regularly partner with many community agencies, including CASA, Latino Economic Development Center, the Southeast Community Development Center. And we have worked to approve and prevent various evictions throughout the city, not only for Latino constituents, but for all constituents in the city. We also provide our water for all services in English and Spanish. We regularly walk customers through the acceptance of funds and guide them through all of the processes in Spanish as well as English. And when individuals do not speak English or Spanish, we do solicit our language line for that as well. We regularly participate in outreach activities. I myself have presented to the Spanish-speaking community on various platforms, informing them that things like social security numbers are not required to seek our services. We also make it clear that our services are not part of the public charge rule. That seems to be a common misconception amongst the Latino community. So, among all of my presentations, I make sure to explicitly state that.
Just a follow-up question, Mr. Chair. Do the CAP Centers all have signage that say, if you speak another language, you know, let us know?
Yes.
But in that, you know, in Spanish, so they're all, they have signage?
Yes. And we also have language ID cards. So, in case someone does come in and we're unsure of which language they speak, we will pull out that card, and the constituent can point out to the language that they speak. And then we'll go to telephonic interpretation.
Great, thank you.
I would also like to offer some additional information that Director Whitaker has.
So, I'd like to also add that we have provided a four-part series for cultural competency for the Latino community. We worked with a vendor that was referred to us through MEMA, and all staff did receive that, and we will plan to ensure that any new staff who didn't receive it at the time that we provided it, get that training as well.
Thank you. I know how hard the CAP Center works, so I do great work. Any more questions from councilmembers? Councilwoman Odet?
Thank you. To DHCD, can you let us know, I'm particularly interested in making sure that we have Latina people in the, Latinos in the permit office as well as other front-facing offices and a liaison? Are you moving in that direction?
I can circle back to you on that. I know that we do have 11 Spanish speakers within our agency. I am not sure which, within which divisions they're located, but I can follow up on that with you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, that concludes all the council questions, so we're going to move the vote. Is there a motion?
Motion to move the bill?
Councilwoman Ramos want to do some closing remarks.
Pardon? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice President, and colleagues. I just want to, again, thank you all for engaging in this important conversation and, you know, asking the great questions. And my colleague, Councilwoman Porter, really did hit it on the head. We do have to establish those metrics, and I work with the city administrator's office and the mayor to look at that. I also believe that 5% of the population is an undercount. I think it's more like 11%, just given, you know, our experience with working on filling out the census, et cetera. And that our Latino population has grown 80% since the last census here in Baltimore City. So, the fact that we've got our community all over the city is important. I'm grateful that the CAP Centers are looking to make sure that there's representation in each of the centers. I think that's extremely important. And I want to thank the agencies for taking this extremely seriously to move in this direction. I think it's, I think it's important. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, for having this hearing. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We're going to move the vote. Is there a motion to move the resolution?
So moved.
So moved, Councilman Torrance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second about Council Vice President. Councilwoman Stokes is a yes. Council Vice President?
My vote is a yes, and just quickly, as far as the CAP Center, just to let everyone know that Council, Chair Stokes and myself are on the CAP Center Board, and I can vouch that they have always and continue to make sure training is efficient, and it's just a very good team that stays on the forefront of all of the needs of our city.
Councilwoman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilwoman Porter? Thank you. This bill, sorry, Councilman, I thought I actually faced. Councilman Torrance?
Aye.
This bill moves to the next council meet on October the 16th. This hearing is adjourned. And thank everybody for participating. This was a great testimony, because I got a class in 101 today also. Thank you.